Hello, I'm J. Jermaine Bay of Alodin Morse Parade in Monte, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 117, Class 117. What do we learn in Class 116? Well, the bottom line is this, we wasted a lot of time as a people. What kind of people? Colonized people, regardless of what name that you go by, whether it's Negro, Black, Color, African American, Indian, Hebrew, Moore, Moorish, no matter what you call yourself. The reality is this, we have wasted a lot of time as a collective people, right? What do I mean when I say we wasted a lot of time? We never looked, we never took the time to truly understand what our real problem is and always has been. And what is the real problem? Is that we're just simply colonized. Okay, so if we're dealing with colonialism, then now we need to be dealing with what? Nationalism. The only way to decolonize, right? You must understand the obligations of how to nationalize. The opposite of colonialism is nationalism. So all we had to do as a people is study nationalism. And it's not like we had to invent it. Decolonization has been going on since the 17th and 1800s. We have to understand at the very least that the African states started decolonizing in the 40s. The 1940s, look it up. Some of the original African states who became members to the United Nations Charter after 1945 were African states. Then next you know, more African states started decolonizing in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. It's called nationalism. So the whole time, we thought our problem was racism. It was never racism. The problem is we didn't understand nationalism. And why is it that we did not understand nationalism? The reason why is because of our leaders. Our leaders were put in a position where we blindly followed them. We were in blind faith. We were in followership of our leaders instead of being in scholarship of ourselves. We should have been studying ourselves in terms of finding out what the Africans were doing to decolonize. We should have been studying the islands to see what the islands were doing to decolonize. Even Cuba forgot, say, is an independent state. Cuba is no more than maybe 97 miles off the coast of Florida. Even Cuba has claimed their independence. Cuba has a constitution. Cuba has government. There are Cubans recognized by what? A constitution. What have the Moors learned from all the people on planet Earth and turned it into a status of nationalism? It's a nationalism movement. We haven't learned anything from other Moors who have decolonized. And why is that? It's because we've been in blind faith of our leaders. That's the problem. So therefore, if that's the problem, then what's the solution? Well, we have to put purpose and priority over posturing. We have to put purpose and priority over paralysis of analysis. We have to put purpose and priority over the old paradigm of following those old leaders. We've been following them in circles. Every last one of them are nothing but Moses. And we've been following them for 40 plus years going nowhere fast because none of those teachers are teaching decolonization. None of those teachers from the old paradigm of teaching international law. None of the teachers from the past are teaching what the Africans did to check boxes. Heck, they don't even tell you what Cuba did to get their independence. We have to turn the page. We have to establish a new paradigm. Because if we don't, then we'll always get what we've always got. Let's get into the class. So as the Moors know, I always open up with the Constitution. Constitution is paramount, right? So today, I'm going to open up with this. Cuba's Constitution. Cuba came out with their constitution in the year 1901. 1901. Constitution of Republic of Cuba, a small island of Moors. They fought off all kinds of colonies. They fought off the Spaniards after 1492 when Spain came over and colonized Cuba, right, along with Christopher Columbus, et cetera. That's why the Cubans speak Spanish today because of the Spaniards. The Puerto Ricans speak Spanish because of the Spaniards. Central America, South America, all these adjoining islands speak Spanish for the most part. Dominican Republic speaks Spanish because of the Spaniards. Spaniards came over and colonized. And after the Spaniards colonized, then the British came over and started to remove the Spaniards, right, and then the Spaniards moved right back in after Great Britain. Then after that, the United States started colonizing, right? But eventually Cuba got their full independence, right? 1901, don't get me wrong, they still had to keep up the good fight. But they established their constitution in 1901. Nova Can you read the preamble from 1901 Constitution of Cuba?
We, the delegates of the people of Cuba, having met in constitutional convention for the purpose of preparing and adopting the fundamental law of their organization as an independent and sovereign people, establishing a government capable of fulfilling its international obligations, maintaining public peace, ensuring liberty, justice, and promoting the general welfare, do hereby agree upon and adopt the following constitution invoking the protection of the Almighty.
All right, so Cuba's doing this in 1901, right? And they're seeking independence as a people. But they're using what? The proper written instrument commonly called Constitution. What else? Listen. So in 1901, next you know, Nova Jolie comes out after 1901, right? He starts to write a constitution because he knows this is the process, the due process of what competent people do on planet Earth. Now check it out. Then in 1940, Cuba turned around and changed their constitution again. All right, so good brother Dre, can you read this from the top?
Constitution of the Republic of Cuba, 1940. Constitution of the Republic of Cuba. We, the delegates of the people of Cuba, assembled in a constituent convention for the purpose of establishing a new fundamental law to consolidate our organization as an independent and sovereign state capable of assuring freedom and justice, maintaining order, and promoting the general welfare, do hereby invoking the favor of God, set forth the following constitution.
All right, so Cuba now writing a second constitution, right? And their constitution is about what? It's trying to establish what? A sovereign state. You see that? What were the Moors doing during this time? Keep in mind, Nova's gone by now. This is, this is well after 1929. Now it's 1940, Cuba's over there on a small island drafting another constitution. What were the Moors doing? You know what they were doing? Hiding their temples. That's what they were doing. So you have to understand the fundamentals that if people want independence, and this is what all the Negroes, Blacks, Colors, and Moors have been begging for, marching and praying about for decades. Ever since the 1800s after the Civil War. So how is it Cuba's on a small island right outside the big bad United States and these islanders understand the due process of international law? But yet the Moors here, what's commonly known as the West, still are subjugated people, still dealing with dependency under colonists, but yet the Cubans got their independence. Now, since this constitution, they've updated their constitution. Everybody should have another that came out in the year 2019, all right? Just for the record. Well, what's my point? What has taken the Negroes, Blacks, Colors, and Moors so long to understand the basic fundamentals of decolonization? What has taken us so long as a collective community of people who've been colonized to understand how to declare our independence and draft a constitution? We never took the time to get and understand how is that Cuba got independence? That never crossed anybody's mind? This is sad, we wasted a lot of time. But the time is up. We will no longer be in blind followership of leaders who are just walking around in circles. We will move forward. So therefore, in understanding international law, the competent Moroccan nationals have moved forward with their constitutions, such as ANPAC has moved forward, right? We've got now the Wazir Regional Council of seven Moroccan states, provincial Moroccan states in the Empire of Morocco. We're following the same footsteps of Cuba. Same footsteps of 55 African states. The same footsteps of several islands that have already declared their independence and drafted constitutions. Now they're self-governing. How is it that we stand here on the same side of planet Earth as the United Nations headquarters? But yet we haven't decolonized. You know why we haven't yet? Because our leaders did not teach us nationalism. They didn't teach us how to decolonize. They didn't teach us the simplicity of how to use a competent opinion. Instead, we've been fighting for civil rights and justice. And the reality is we should have been fighting for decolonization and nationalism. The whole time, we've been walking in circles and marching and praying, and we've wasted a lot of time. Who was out front the whole time? People that look just like you and I. We were in blind followership, but not anymore. We move forward, right? Now, once the Moors establish their constitution as Moroccan nationals, and at some point, if you petition the WRC, the WRC member states will recognize your state and you also become a member of the Wazir Regional Council because the Wazir Regional Council acts as a regional agency. It is the central government of the Moorish empire. All right, we'll talk more about that. All right. So today, we will start taking steps towards reading the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts in the year 2001. This is the United Nations document that came out on how do you hold other states responsible? What's the rules of engagement, right? This, how do you maintain peace and security if in fact another state injures your state? Right, how do you hold another state accountable? And more importantly, if in fact you hit it with sanctions or reparations or whatever, how do you force them to pay up, right? So the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts is what we'll start going over. But what I need the Moors to see quickly off the top, it says, responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts. Guess who can only become a party to this United Nations treaty? Well, only states can become a party and enforce it. Therefore, if the Moors are stateless, that means we can't become a party, which means we cannot bring any type of sanctions or obligations against the United States of America. Because United States of America is the de jour proper name on all the contracts. So when I ask the question to the Moors, okay, Moors, you say the United States of America, okay, what's the name of our state? The Moorish Americans, stateless, they don't have a state. So how are we ever going to bring any type of responsibilities and obligations against the state when we were stateless? And this is what we got to understand off the top, that states are bound by what? International law, not municipal law. The Moors have been taught to study the internal domestic municipal laws of the several union states and study the case law and the grand judicatus of Supreme Court. Wrong answer. It was a misconception. We wasted a lot of time. We should have been studying international law in order to hold states responsible for what? Their wrongful acts. So therefore, we were derelict in our own duties to establish our state the same way Cuba did. All right, so let's take it to the board real quick. What are we going to go over? Let's recap. We're still going over the Charter of United Nations. Now we've gone over chapters six, seven, and eight, right? So six was about what? Mediation, arbitration, and adjudication. What steps you take, right? When you've been injured, right? So chapter seven was about what? Threats, breaches, and acts of aggression, right? So when states now do something to injure your state, it's either a threat, it's breaches, and it's acts of aggression. And then most recently, we read over chapter eight, which is about regional arrangements and regional agencies, right? How to maintain peace and security within your region. So you got a state, and then you got a region, which is typically a part of a continent, right? And what is all that about? Well, when you start studying these three chapters, they start playing off of each other, right? So first they say, okay, here's how you settle disputes. You settle disputes in chapter six, mediation, arbitration, adjudication, because you're dealing with what? Chapter seven, threats, breaches, and aggression from other states. But you can also bring in regional organizations, right? International, intergovernmental organizations, as well as states to put together regional arrangements where several states come together to deal with maybe one belligerent state. Or several states versus several states, right? So back in the day, you had the, you had the Axis Powers versus the Allied Powers, right? Back in the day, okay, when they was talking about World War I, World War II, the Cold War, et cetera, right? These were regional arrangements, states clicking up and creating regional, trying to maintain regional peace and security, right? Wherever it may have taken place. And so now we're starting learning about this. On the Articles on the Responsibility of States for Internationally Wrongful Acts of 2001. Why did the United Nations have to come up with this? Well, it's like, okay, how do you now hold these charters, chapters of the Charter obligations? So if there's threats, breaches, and acts of aggression, right? One of the law, international laws that hold people responsible was down here. 2001, they finally said, use these provisions. This is international law to hold people obligated, right? It's almost like a tort claim, right? It's like how you bring suit against someone? How do you bring suit against a state? You see? So therefore, it's about the responsibility of states to hold other states accountable. So therefore, it's basically about what? Reparations. Moors, right? Moors, Negroes, Blacks, Colors, everybody's been trying to figure out, how do we get reparations? Well, guess what? It was already written in 2001. But nobody studies this stuff. Your church leaders are not going to teach you about international law. Your Negro Coalition Organization is not going to teach you about international law. The HBCU presidents are not going to allow their students to learn about international law and decolonization. They're too busy taking grants. The civic Moors are not going to teach you about international law. The temple Moors not going to teach you about international law. You got to study on your own and understand if you want reparations, then it starts with international law. That's been our problem the whole time. We didn't understand international law. You know how we, how I know? We didn't understand international law? It's because we've been stateless. Anyone who studies international law, they know that international law is all about what? States. And the Negroes, Blacks, Colors, and Moors alike have all been stateless. And that's how I know we haven't been studying international law. We've been derelict in our own duties to understand the observation, application, and recognition of our own treaty rights. It's because we've been in blind faith. Let's continue. Okay. All right. Now, before we start reading over the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts, I have to now, I got to back up a little bit, right? We need to refresh the course. How is it that Moors can get into statehood? Well, we get it, Africa did it, and the islands have done it, but what about Moors? Under the classification of Moore, when we call ourselves Moors, right? Let's go back and understand before we understand this treaty, right? Because this is a treaty, international treaty. It's a multilateral treaty. Let's go back and read our own Moorish treaty that was signed in the year 1906. Between United States of America and 11 other signatory powers with the European powers. So 12 European states signed a multilateral treaty with the Sultan of the Empire of Morocco in 1906. And the Sultan gave the Moors back the sovereign power to govern again in the Empire of Morocco. And the empire is vast, it crosses over the seven seas. The empire consists of continents and seas. That's the empire, right? So in order to understand before we start reading about the responsibility of states, firstly, I go backwards so we can see the obligation that the Moors had to establish statehood. Because the Sultan was starting to get into statehood himself, okay? All right, so in this treaty, now we come down to the preamble, okay? We're going to read the preamble as a reminder. That way, we understand what was the obligation of Moors that the Sultan set forth for Moors. You got to understand, the Sultan threw the Moors an alley-oop, and we missed it. The Sultan was in trouble, and he ditched it. He just threw it up in the air for the Moors to catch it off the backboard and just throw it down, and we missed it. And here's what the instructions. The Sultan was running plant guard. The Moors was been flanking from the left and the right. We didn't do it. We stayed silent. And the European states never woke us up like they were supposed to do. But this treaty is still enforced. Let's remind ourselves about how do Moors get into statehood? Okay, preamble, uh, nope.
Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the the integrity of his domains and economic liberty without any inequality, have resolved upon the invitation of His Sharifian Majesty to call together a conference at Al Jazeera for the purpose of arriving at an understanding upon the said reforms as well as examining the means for obtaining the resources necessary for their application, and have appointed as their delegates plenty, plenty potentiary the following.
All right, so it was the obligation that the Sultan set forth, and the United States of America along with other signatory powers have already agreed, right? They have already recognized, right? The United States of America is already recognized by signing this treaty. They've recognized the obligation of the Sultan and the Empire of Morocco along with the Moors to start to govern the great enterprise commonly known as the Empire of Morocco. All right, so you got to catch these powerful words in the preamble. So let me start from the beginning. It says, inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence. What is sovereignty and independence? That's statehood, right? We just talked about that with Cuba, right? In their constitution about sovereign, about a sovereign state and independence, right? So therefore, the empire was now getting into a sovereign, independent status, getting into a modern type of statehood, right? Now, the Europeans were recognizing. See that word, recognizing? Europeans already recognized the triple principle and obligation, right? And application of the sovereignty and independence of the Empire of Morocco. That's statehood, right? Then it continues to say, independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, right? The integrity of his domain, what domain? The Empire of Morocco. Remember George Washington, 1789? Write George Washington's letter to Sultan of Morocco. He thanked Sidi Mohammed for allowing him to stay in his dominions, right? In his dominions, this was George Washington was talking about, right? Dominions, Empire of Morocco. So it's about integrity. What does integrity mean? You get to protect your domain, right? That's integrity of domains. Maintaining your administration, right? Which is your three branches of government, the executive branch, right? Legislative branch, and judicial branch maintains the integrity of domains, the administration that governs the dominion or territory or state. Then it says, and economic liberty without any inequality. That's the third part of the triple principle. So the triple principle is three things. One, sovereignty and independence, that's one. Two, integrity of domains, which is the state. And three, economic liberty without any inequality. That's number three. And it's already been what? Recognized, see? This is in a treaty, okay? So then it continues to say, have resolved. See, it's already been resolved. Keep in mind, the United States of America signed it. They already have recognized the power of the Moors to get back into their state governments. It's already been resolved. Okay, resolve upon the invitation of His Sharifian Majesty to call together, so he summoned, the Sultan summoned all the European states to call together a conference at Al Jazeera for the purpose of arriving at an understanding upon the said reforms. So everything, the triple principle is about the reform, is being reformed now. The empire, right? As well, as well as examining the means for obtaining the resources necessary for their application, and have appointed as their delegates plenty potentiary the following. So it's about the application of the reforms, right? Because the reforms have already been what? Resolved and resolved and they've already been what? Recognized, right? Already been recognized. You see? This is all in the preamble. So it was the obligation of Moors to return back to the triple principle of sovereignty and independence, which is statehood. And in order to have sovereignty, you got to get into a constitution. Because the world started changing. So, okay, if you want to establish what's called a state or territory, it must be identified in a constitution. Listen, so what was the reforms about? Why are we talking about this? So we can understand what's the obligation of Moors. Our obligation was to get into statehood, right? To start governing the great enterprise of our own empire again, okay? Now, listen. This is how the preamble starts to, uh, finish itself. Brother Dre?
Who furnished with full powers which were found in good and new form have the conformity with the program upon which His Sharifian Majesty and the powers have agreed, successfully discussed and adopted.
So all the European powers. Right? Because I skipped through all the states, right? All the European powers have agreed to this one hundred and twenty-three articles, right? I.e. seven chapters, circle seven chapters, right? And what is it that they agreed to, right? They have already agreed in conformity, in conformity, the United States of America signed this, they have to maintain in conformity what? Alright, Brother Dre?
One, a declaration relative to the organization of the police. Two, a regulation concerning the detection and repression of the contraband of arms. Three, an act of concession for Moroccan State Bank. Four, a declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenues. Five, a regulation concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling. Six, a declaration relative to public services and public works. And having decided that these different documents might usefully be coordinated in a single instrument, they have united them in a general act composed of the following articles.
Alright, so thank you very much. So that's six. And then obviously, the seventh one. Alright, I, I'll go to the seventh one real quick. The seventh article, okay, was article, chapter, I say, chapter, chapter seven is about what? General provisions, right? So it's seven chapters, okay? Now, this was the obligation of Moors to start to govern the empire. You see, that's in a treaty. You got Moors out there saying, Noble Drali didn't say that. Well, all you do is just shake your head, right? And i- i- it's just absolutely asinine. When Moors keep hiding behind Noble because they just refuse to freaking study what nationalism is actually all about. A national movement is nationalism. It's just absolutely asinine. They don't study, right? Let, let's look up the definition of asinine. Uh, Brother Dre?
Asinine, adjective, extremely stupid or foolish. Similar, stupid, foolish, pointless, brainless, idiotic, embellish, imbecile, insane, lunatic.
And this is why they keep giving the Moors insanity tests. Because Moors, everything they're saying is asinine, and asinine means extremely stupid or foolish. So when the Moors hear me say, and people are stuck on stupid, I'm just simply saying it's asinine. That you keep trying to say that literature and legislation are equivalent. Right? This is what Moors gotta understand. This is, this, the whole world's looking at us saying, how the heck are y'all over there with the United Nations headquarters? And all the thing you keep talking about is Noble Drali's literature. Did Noble Drali say that? No, the day-old treaty said it, fool. That's what we need to understand. Let's get back to the treaty, because treaty supreme order, man, it's about the empire, the empire. It's in your treaty, Moors. Speaking of Moors, now you come down, you understand what was the obligation of Moors right off the top? The parties must be known. In any contract, the parties must be known. So first things first, who had the power in this contract? It was the Sultan. He summoned them. He made the United States of America and the other eleven signatory powers sign this treaty. And in this treaty, they were resurrecting the Moors' government. So the Sultan and the Moors coming back together. Right? It's like a peon role. Coming back together. It was a monarch, and then you had the Moxin, which is the Moors' government working side by side. Okay? Let me prove that. Okay. Chapter one, no?
Chapter one, Declaration Relative to the Organization of the Police. Article one, uh, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police declares that the following provision should be made. Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Moxin from Moors Mohammedans, commanded by Moors Cades, and can distributed in the eight ports open to commerce.
So what's happening? Right off the top, article one, the Sultan ran the order. I'm in charge. The Sultan of what, though? What was the Sultan overseeing as an office? Keep in mind, Sultan is not an individual. It's an office. It's a title. No different than saying like Prime Minister, uh, Head of State, et cetera. The Sultan was Head of State, right? But at tha- at that time, what was the state called? It's called what? Going back up. What was it called?
Empire.
The empire. The empire, Empire of State, right? And this is what the Sultan was overseeing at the time, and this is what the United States of America agreed to. The United States of America recognizes the empire. The treaties recognize the empire. The Europeans recognize the empire. The Moroccan nationals who have now their own constitutions recognize the empire. So now, the Sultan says, okay, you Moors, right? Because now we're starting to talk about the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. So all police come under the authority of the Sultan. Well, who was supposed to be the police? It was the Moors. Listen. It shall be recruited by the Moxin from the Moors Mohammedans, right? Commanded by Moors Cades and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce. But wait a minute. So the Moors and the Sultan are coming, you guys see this right here? Sultan, Moxin. Sultan, Moors. All in one article. So who's working side by side? The Sultan and Moors. But wait a minute. Well, what's the, what's the Moxin, right? What's a Moxin? Okay. The Moxin. Noble?
Moxin. Um, in Arabic, uh, Berber language is, uh, is the governing institution in Morocco and in pre nineteen fifty-seven Tunisia, Tunisia, centered on the monarch and consisting of royal notables, top-ranking military personnel, landowners, security service bosses, civil servants, and other well-connected members of the establishment. The term Moxin is also popularly used in Morocco as a word meaning state or government.
So Moxin, Moxin, right? Moxin, right? Maq. Moxin, the term Moxin means state or government. Right? State or government. Let's go back to the treaty. So the Moors were supposed to be in charge of the Moxin. The state or government, right next to who? The Sultan. This is just article two, just getting started. The parties must be known. Right? Then you gotta understand, okay, what are the terms and conditions, right? Who has superior and who's inferior in the contract, right? Off the top, articles one and two is letting you know who's running the show in the Empire of Morocco. Right? So, so wait a minute. So we know Moxin means government, state or government. Okay, now it says who's running it? Moors. Moors, Moors Mohammedans and Moors Cades. But wait a minute. What does Moors mean? Okay. Now you look at the interpretation in French. Look at that. What does Moors mean? On the French side, it's what? Moroccans. So Moroccan, Moors. You see that? You see that? So he got Muslim, Muslim Moroccans. You got Mohammedan Moors. So Moors and Moroccan, right, m- m- Moors and Moroccan is semantic. They mean the same. And Moors keep running around saying they're Americans. You're not American. You're Moroccan. Listen. So then it comes over here, it says, the Moors Cades, right? What is Moors Cades? Okay. You look at the equivalent, it says Moroccans. You got Moroccan, Moroccan. You got Moors, Moors. They say American? No. Moroccans, Moors are Moroccans. Right? Okay. So it was our obligation to run the empire along with the Sultan. Right? So now, you come down here and you look, you put in article thirty-two. Article thirty-two talks about what? The Moors Empire. Right? Can you read article thirty-two for me, Brother Dre?
Article thirty-two. The bank, which will have power to carry on all transactions entering into the operations of a bank, shall have the exclusive privilege of issuing notes to bear payable on presentation and receivable for public dues throughout the Moors Empire.
Uh-huh. So, with the Moors Empire, okay, let's look at the equivalent. For the Moors Americans out there who keep saying they're not Moroccans. So the Moors Empire, the Moors Empire is about what? The empire of what? The Empire of Moroccans. It's too easy. You know why Moors Americans don't know this? It's because their leaders, their teachers aren't teaching this. So why are we going over this again? Because we're starting to get what? Into statehood. I gotta go backwards and remind Moors about our own Moors treaties before we move forward to keep studying a United Nations treaty. How is it we can now hold other states responsible for injuring our Moors state? It's because our Moors state must be a state. How do you establish a state, though? In the twenty-first century, everybody must have what? A constitution. This is what people gotta understand. And Moors Americans are in the absence of a competent constitution for several reasons. One reason why is because ain't no such thing as Moors Americans. And Moors are not Americans. They certainly ain't the true American. That's fraud. That's identity theft. The treaties say you are Moroccan in the Empire of Morocco. There's a Moors Empire right there in a treaty, article thirty-two. The Moors say, when I say Moors, JB, they don't say more. So, okay. That's that asinine question again. Okay, listen. We're talking statehood right now. Okay, now I type in article ninety-six. For the naysayers out there. Okay, article ninety-six, you scroll down. Where everybody out there saying Noble Drali say we're Moroccans? Okay, right here. Let's start right here, uh, Brother Dre, right? This is honorary. Article ninety-six, honorary.
Honorary members shall be selected from the list of notables drawn up in the case of foreign subjects by each legation and in the case of Moors by the Sultan's representative. They shall be appointed as far as possible in proportion to the importance of the commerce of each nation.
Mm-hmm. So the word Moors in article ninety-six is a spanned a long word. It's say Moreish. It just says simply Moors. Okay, who are Moors? Okay, let's look at the equivalent in French. Okay, here we go. Moroccans. Moroccans. Moors are Moroccans. This is too easy. They're supposed to be doing what? Dealing with what? Nations, right? Nations, nations. Moors are governing over nations. This is what this treaty is all about. It's a decolonization treaty because the Moors have been colonized by the time of nineteen oh six, and the Sultan said, nah, go ahead and wake them up. The Sultan knew that the Europeans was trying to take over the Empire of Morocco. They had always, already started colonizing Africa. Right? After eighteen eighty-four, they started colonizing Africa. Well, technically, after fourteen ninety-two, they, they were colonizing. Let's, let's get our timeframes together. After fourteen ninety-two, the Spaniards, uh, the Dutch, the Belgians, uh, 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 the Germans, Italy, everybody started colonizing Africa, right? But after eighteen eighty-four, they really said, the Europeans said, we gotta come together, right? What they call the Berlin Conference of eighteen eighty-four. Okay? And they started organizing themselves and now taking over Africa because they put together, it's called an organized Jewish society amongst Europeans because they were invited. So they got together collectively and started working out their arrangements, regional arrangements, on how they're gonna start siphoning off resources from Africa. And the Sultan knew this. So the Sultan raised and those Europeans said, nah, 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 nah. W- wake up the Moors. The Sultan took a loan from Great Britain, Sultan took a loan from Spain, and the Sultan took a loan from France, and he knew he had to pay that money back, and he said, that's a predatory loan I just took. Wake up the Moors. And I'm gonna let these Moors govern y'all, because I ain't gonna let y'all take the empire from me, meaning the Sultan. This is what he's thinking, right? Keep in mind, the word Sultan is in office. Okay? So he said, wake up the Moors, and the Moors are who? Moroccans. Right? Did Noble Drali say that? Yes, he did. Noble Drali said we're descendants of Moroccans. Fool. Now, listen. Don't you think it's very interesting, if I go back up to article two, right? If I go back up to article two, if I go back up to article two, I gotta go over this, Moors. We just started talking about the Moxin. So, government, right? For Moors. But wait a minute. Moxin, M-A, okay, M-A. When you look over here, you say, why do you keep spelling Moroccan with an M-A? Right? Now you gotta understand, this is all these different dialects, right? Okay. Moxin, but yet they spell more, M-O-O-R. In English, it's M-O-O-R, right? In other languages, it's M-A-R. Listen. Okay. So, watch this. We looked up the definition of Moxin. Let's spend a moment on this. You see how the Arabs? Arabs are combining themselves. The Arabs keep combining themselves with the Berbers. You gotta catch it when you read it, though. Most people skim right past it. Why the Arabs keep mentioning the word Berber? Right? Why do they keep mentioning that? Okay. Because the Berbers are the ones who are running the Moxin. Because the Moors, right? The Moors in the treaty are also considered Mor- Moroccans. M-A. M-A-R, you got M-O-O-R, okay? Be patient with me. So when you look at Moxin, and it's talking about Berber, then it's talking about the term Moxin, and it's tying the word Moors into this word Moxin, and it's talking about Berber. Now you gotta understand what's really going on. Okay. Alright. Berbers, right? Berbers. Noble, can you read this for me?
The indigenous populations of the Mugrib region of North Africa are collectively known as Berbers or Amazai in English.
Alright, so the indigenous people, right? The indigenous populations of the Magid, if they M-A again, the Magid region of North Africa are collectively known as Berbers. So the Berbers are the indigenous people or Amazai people, right? A- a- Amazai, Amazai. Right? Amazai. Like they say the Amazon River or the Amazon. You understand when they use the word Amazon? They're talking about these indigenous lands, right? The Amazon is where they get this word Amazai. Amazon, you see Amazon? You see Amazon, right? When they use these terminology, they're talking about indigenous lands and indigenous people. Alright, follow me. So you got the Amazai people, right? Who are dealing with the Moxin, this is where they get the word Moxin, from the Amazai people. Okay? Which are also considered Berbers. So Berbers, Amazai people are who? The indigenous people, right? The indigenous people, right? The indigenous people. So you click on Berber, okay? You click on Berber. And here's what it says about Berbers, let's, let's go over this brief history so that boys can understand, we're, we're talking statehood. Well, we have to understand that we were already running government before the Arabs or colonists ever came into place, so now we're decolonizing. We got colonized, which means we had the governments. Then our governments were conquered, and now we're restoring our governments. But in the twenty-first century, they say you have to have a constitution in order to restore a territory. Right, and under Udi, Passidus juris, you can only restore one little small territory at a time that will already have borders that the colonists put in place. This is what the International Court of Justice already set forth, right? It's what you call customary norms of international law. It's customary, if you wanna be colonized, you have to take over the borders already of the territory that you live in. You just can't take over the whole dang old empire in one shot, it don't work like that. Because the empire's been broken up into pieces where all the colonists have put in constitutions claiming little bitty parcels of land all over our empire. Okay, so we can only claim each territory one at a time, since the United States is claiming fifty separate territories, trust territories, so we gotta reclaim them each one of those fifty territories at a time individually with a constitution, because that's what international law says we have to do. So let's read about the Berbers, let, let's learn some history. Right, let's learn more specifically, what, what's my point here? How do we end up with this M-A, right? How do we end up with this word M-A in the, in the treaty? Okay, listen, I don't wanna lose my point. How do we end up with M-A? M-A-R, Moroccans versus M-O-O-R, Moors, right? Li- Listen. Before I even go into that Berber thing, listen. Etymology. Okay. We're gonna look up the word Moorish, M-O-O-R-I-S-H, that's what's in the treaty, right? Okay. What's say Moorish mean, the definition, etymology dictionary? Noah?
Moorish adjective, of or pertaining to the Moors. Mid-fifteenth century, Maurice, 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 or Maurice-ish. Earlier was Mauricey, mid-fourteenth century, from old French, Moresque, Mauricey. Also compare Moresco, Moresco.
All right, so Moorish. Moorish is pertaining to the Moors. So when you say Moorish, it just simply says Moorish. And then we learned that in Article thirty-two of the Act of Abstinence, we can go down to Article thirty-two, says, Moors are what, Moroccans? Right, so it says, Article thirty-two says Moorish Empire, right? You go down to Article ninety-six, says Moor, Moroccans, right? Keep this in mind, we're talking treaty and etymology dictionary, see how we tie these words in? So if Moorish, it means more, listen. So Moorish means more, etymology dictionary. Now let's type in Morocco, all right? Morocco, okay, click on that.
Morocco, Morocco. Country in Northwest Africa, from Italian, from Berber Marrakech, properly the name of the city of Marrakech. From Arabic Maghrib Al- Alkassa.
Alaksa.
Alaksa, uh, extreme west. Compare French Mer- Morocco, German Marako. In English, the first vowel has been altered, apparently by influence of Moor, related Moroccan.
Okay, so Morocco recognizes the Moor. So Morocco is influenced, so what happened in English? Read this sentence right here, in English.
The first vowel has been altered, apparently by influence of Moor.
Right, so what was the first vowel? The A, see? F-A-R, so now in English. It says the what? It says that in English, the first vowel has been altered apparently by influence of Moor. So Moor means what? Morocco. But also Moor means what? Moroccan. It's etymology dictionary. Did it say Moor means American? No. Moor means Moroccan. Morocco means, Morocco means Moroccan, and Moroccan means Moor. It's too easy, eh? But wait a minute. Let's look up the word Moor. All right. All right, scroll on down. Scroll down. To the proper noun, okay, capital M. Capital M, okay, Noah?
Moor, uh, noun. North African Berber, one of the race dwelling in Barbary, the late fourteenth century, from old French Moor, from medieval Latin Morris, from Latin Marus, inhabitant of Marentania, Roman Northwest Africa, a region now corresponding to northern Algeria and Morocco, from Greek Marus. Perhaps a native name or else cognate with Marus, black, but this adjective only appears in late Greek and may as well be from the people's name as the reverse.
Continue.
Also applied in the Arabic conquers of Spain, being a dark people in relation to Europeans. Their name in the Middle Ages was a synonym for Negro. Later sixteenth century to seventeenth century, being the nearest Muslims to Western Europe. It was used indiscriminately of Muslims, Persians, Arabs, etc., but especially those in India, cognate with Dutch Moor, German Moor, Danish Maurer, Spanish Moro, Italian Moro, related Moress.
Mm-hmm, so all these people that the Europeans encountered, that they call Indians, India, they say all these people in India, Indians are who? Moors. You see, so you gotta understand the word Moor was a generic term throughout the world. Everywhere they saw dark-skinned people, they used to call them Moors. Moors was the first name they gave everybody on planet Earth that was copper-colored. It wasn't Negro, Black, and they colored, it was just Moor. Right, they made the distinction between Europeans and colored people, they just called them Moors. Before the word Black ever came into the lexicon, they was calling people Moor. They called the Indians Moors. Listen. So therefore the Moor, the Moor, the Moor is the Negro, and the Moor is who? The Black. So the Negroes and Blacks and Colors are who? Moors. You see that? You got Indian people, ah, man, I'm Indian, Indians are Moors. Get over yourself. That's the truth. Listen. So therefore Moors, Moor, Moor is a Negro, is a Black, right? And also what? Coming back up, the Berber. Right, look up Moor, so Moor are Berbers, you see that? Okay, but how do we end up with this M-A? Well, it's because this, back in the day, things started with an N-A, and over time, it ended up becoming a M-O because of the translation of different, um, languages, right? So they said English kinda changed it into M-O instead of M-A. Okay? So going back to your treaty. This is why when you look at your treaty, you see M-A, Moroccan, and then you see Moorish, miss, is both the same. Moorish means Moroccan, because Moor means Moroccan. Morocco, abbreviation for Morocco is Moor. You can't spell Morocco without the word Moor, right? You can't, can't spell the word Morocco. Can't spell the word Morocco without M-O-R. Moroccan, M-O-R. Moor, M-O-R, you see? Moors have been taught that they're true American and not, they're Moroccans. Always have been, always will be, and Noah Dolly trying to tell everybody what? We're descendants of Moroccans. Naturalized in the jurisdiction of America. We got adopted by the American jurisdiction, and we have to return to our Moroccan jurisdiction with a pen. And that's what the Sultan was trying to do for us in nineteen oh six. He was re-establishing the Moors, who are the Moroccans, to come back into sovereign government. See that? Come back into what? Sovereign authority through our Ma'zin, which is the government, state or government, it's too simple. But let's get back to the Berbers. And Berbers are who? Moors. Noah?
Berbers. Arabic or the Berber peoples also called by the contemporary self-name Amazai, um, or Amazan, Amazan. Berber languages, Romanized, um, uh, whatever, whatever, okay? Are a diverse group of distinct ethnic groups.
Pause. So you see Ma'zin? See the word Ma'zin? Berber. Berber. Ma'zin. The Ma'zin is the state government of who? Berbers, which are who? Moors. See how you this is? This is all Tashri Bay had to do. This is all the Grand Sheiks had to do. This is all your mosque leaders had to do, all your pastors and priests. All they had to do is just go through this basic explanation to show us who we are, the people. All that marching and praying and keep hope alive, we don't need no hope. We just know how to read a dang old treaty, that's all. Treaty is supreme law of the land. For who? Moors, who are common on as Berbers or Amazai people, the Ma'zin, right? The Ma'zin, the Ma'zin, the Amazai people, Amazon, like the Amazon River, etc. Ma'zin, you gotta understand how these words come together. Okay. Let's learn a little history about what happened to us as Moors. Berbers are Moors, show them the top.
Okay, Berbers. Or the Berber's people also called by their contemporary self-name Amazai, um, or Amazai. Um, Berber languages are Romanized, singular, um, also Arabic. Are a diverse grouping of distinct ethnic group, um, indigenous to North Africa who predate the arrival of Arabs and the Arab migrations to the Maghrib. Their main connections are identified by the usage of Berber languages, most of them mutually unintelligible, which are part of the Afrozi- Afro- Afroasiatic.
Afroasiatic.
Afroasiatic language family. They are indigenous to the Maghrib region of North Africa, where they live in scattered communities across parts of Morocco, Algeria, Libya, and to a lesser extent Tunisia, Mauritania, uh, northern Mali and northern Niger.
Niger.
Niger. Smaller Berber communities are also found in Burkina Faso and Egypt's, um, Saïwa Oasis. Descendants from Stone Age tribes of North Africa, accounts of the Amazai were first mentioned in ancient Egyptian writings. From about two thousand BCE, Berber languages spread westward from the Nile Valley across the northern Sahara into the Maghrib. A series of Berber people such as the Maori, Masia- Masiali, um, Masili, Muslim, Muslimi, um, Gaetuli, and Gar Montes gave rise to Berber kingdoms such as Namibia and Marentania.
Pause. So it's all about Berber kingdoms. See that? We were ruling. Berber kingdoms. The empire was vast. See all the state names they're mentioning, Egypt, Tunisia, Algeria, Morocco, it's, it's an empire. Now you gotta remember now, Europeans be writing this stuff. They always trying to make it look like the Moors were only in North Africa. They know the Moors are all over the planet Earth. They know the art of facts is all the pyramids all over planet Earth. Right? Everywhere you go, you see Moorish buildings, everywhere you go on planet Earth, they all look the same. It's almost like the same builder built the Moorish buildings all over planet Earth. Every stretch of it, right? So they know the Moors built all this stuff. We were all called Moors at one time, right? But they always trying to write this narrative as if Moors are only from North Africa. Where they know Moors are all up in Europe, even the Europeans right now, they still got statues and all the buildings we built over there before they even came into power. So all of Europe got colonized, right? And that's the truth. The whole world been colonized, whole world. Okay, so it was about our kingdoms, right? But it's really empires, right? So they don't wanna say Berber empire, they, they, they narrative say Berber kingdoms. But they playing games, right? Because the treaty say what? Empire, okay? Let's continue. Let's pick it up from, uh, Berber kingdoms.
Um, Berber kingdoms were eventually suppressed by the Arab conquests of the seventh and eighth century C.E. This started a process of cultural and linguistic assimilation known as Ar- um, Ar- Arvization, which influenced the Berber population. Arvization involved the spread of Arabic language and Arabic culture among the Berbers, leading to the adoption of Arabic as the primary language and conversion, um, to Islam.
Pause. So all the Moors got colonized and annexed by the Arabs from Arabia. Right? And they intermixed with who? The Moors, the indigenous people. Then they introduced Islam as a religion amongst our people. So you gotta understand the history, the Moors had empires. We've been colonized by colonists and conquerors. Okay.
Notably, the Arab migrations to the Maghrib from the seventh century to the seventeenth century accelerated this process. While local Arab dynasties came to rule parts of the Maghrib after the seventh century, Berber tribes remained powerful political forces and founded new ruling dynasties in the tenth and eleventh centuries, such as the Zarids, Hamadids, various Zenada principal- principalities in the Western Maghrib, and several Taifa kingdoms in Al-Andalus. Islam later proved the ideological stimulus for the rise of fresh Berber empires, the Almor- Almorids and Al-Mohads in the eleventh and thirteenth centuries.
Pause, so now they finally says Berber what? Berber empires. It wasn't kingdoms, they were empires. They were, they were stringing these territories along. That was the, the Moors was holding down, then we got colonized, annexed and conquered by the Arabs and all of the Europeans, right? Okay, just a moment.
Their Berber successors, the Meranids, the Zayanids, and the Hafids continued to rule until the eighth, until the sixteenth century. From the sixteenth century onward, the process continued in the absence of Berber dynasties in Morocco. They were replaced by Arabs claiming descent from the Islamic prophet Muhammad.
Pause. Let's read from here, from?
From the sixteenth century onward, the process continued in the absence of Berber dynasties in Morocco. They were replaced by Arabs claiming descent from the Islamic prophet Muhammad.
Read it again.
From the sixteenth century onward, the process continued in the absence of Berber dynasties in Morocco. They were replaced by Arabs claiming descent from the Islamic prophet Muhammad.
So the Moors got conquered and colonized by the Arabs, starting in the fifteen hundreds, you see? Same time, this is, this is even after fourteen ninety-two, right? So the Arabs just basically took over all the territories, the empire, the, the seven seas of the Moors, and we ended up working for them as their militia. Right? Read it one more time.
From the sixteenth century onward, the process continued in the absence of Berber dynasties in Morocco. They were replaced by Arabs claiming descent from the Islamic prophet Muhammad. Berbers are divided into several diverse ethnic groups and Berber languages, such as Kabyles and, uh, Chais. Historically, Berbers across the region did not see themselves as a single cultural or linguistic unit, nor was there a greater Berber community due to their differing cultures. They also did not refer to themselves as Berbers, Amazai, but had their own terms to refer. They also did not refer to themselves as Berbers, Amazai, but had their own terms to refer to their own groups and communities. They started being referred to collectively as Berbers after the Arab conquest of the seventh century. And this distinction was revived by French colonial administrators in the nineteenth century. Today, the term Berber is viewed as pejorative. By many who prefer the term Amazai. Since the late twenty centuries, a transnational movement known as Berberism. Or the Berber culture movement has emerged among various parts of the Berber populations of North Africa. To promote a collective Amazai ethnic identity. And to militate for greater linguistic rights and cultural recognition.
You see, so what's happening is the Moors are coming back together even in North Africa. This is why I say the Moors, we gotta huddle up. The Moors are starting to come back together all around planet Earth. Right? That's what we gotta understand. Okay. So since they keep calling us Berbers, right? Going back up, they keep calling us Berbers. Now you gotta stand. When you look at trees, watch this. Keep in mind, Berber means Moor and Moor means Moroccan. Look at this, this is called the Barbary Trees, right? Now, reference point, Moors know about this already, but. Reference point, you can go to Yale Law School. Right, this is their website, Yale Law School website, just type in Avalon. Right, type in Avalon, Yale, and it say, here's the Barbary Trees. But Barbary means what? Burger. And this is why all these Negro blacks and colors don't read, understand why they call their Barber Shop. A barber shop, the Barber Shop or the Barbary Treaties, which are the Berbers, and the Berbers are who? Moors. And all the Moors own barber shops. Because the Barbers are the Berbers and the Berbers are the Moors and the Moors are Moroccans and the indigenous people of the land. And these Barbary Treaties are between who? Okay, let's look at these Barbary Treaties, who's this Barbary Treaty, what treaty is that? Oh, that's the treaty with Morocco, June twenty-eighth, July fifteenth, seventeen eighty-six, which is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Right? Between who? Okay, the Barbary said Barbary Treaty, but then you click on the text of the treaty, it opens up. And this treaty is very small text. This, this treaty. Is with who? It's about the Empire Morocco, the Empire, the Emperor Morocco, it's the Empire Morocco, right, was signed with who? United States. Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-six, fully ratified seventeen eighty-seven. It was about who? Barbers. The Barbary Treaties are the Berbers, the Berbers are the Moors and Moors are Moroccans. So United States America was signing treaty with Moroccans. The Moor is abbreviation for Moor Rockings. This is treaty language. And the whole time, these Moors running around talking about, we're the true Americans, you're not American. You're Moroccan. Right? And this treaty was called. Barbary Treaties. Cuz Moors got barber shops. This is too easy. But they too be talking about the black man this and the white man that, nah, we ain't black people. We're Moors. And our true nationality is Moor Rockings. And we have treaties we can enforce through a nationalism, it ain't racism. It's cognitive dissonance is the problem, you don't know who the heck you are. Stop calling us the black man. We're Moroccans. Period. Get back to point. So now we start to look at our trees. The Moors are supposed to be the sovereign authority, what does sovereign mean? You oversee the state. You're the supreme being. But what is the real being that we're talking about is the state itself, the empire is recognized by treaties. And we have to put the empire back together, one state at a time. One state at a time, each of the territories under Udi Passe Davis Juris. This represents seven territories. That's a part of the empire. And we have to get back into statehood. Because the International Court of Justice and all the states on planet Earth have agreed collectively, the only way. For these Moors and indigenous people to get their rights back, they have to declare their independence with a proper, proper instrument. And then draft a constitution like Cuba has and all the other African states. Then you must accede and become a party to the United Nations Charter, cuz you recognize the Charter, it was called a accession. It doesn't make you a member of the Charter, it just says you recognize the Charter, cuz it's about recognition. But always remember that the United States of America. Has already recognized, right? I'm typing the word recognize. Recognize. Type in the word recognize. United States America has already recognized the empire and the fact that the empire was getting into statehood. So, so the empire's already been recognized. But it's been broke up into parcels. It's been broke up into states. And we have to decolonize each of the territories under Udi Passe Davis Juris. That's called a nationalism movement, this is what Il Bellic Shabazz was trying to tell us, we need a nationalism program. Need a nationalism program is what he said. Program, nationalist program. But these trees have already recognized us as Moroccan states. Let me say that again. We as Moors don't need recognition from the United States of America to recognize our Moroccan states. Our Moroccan states have already been recognized through the treaties because we supposed to be sitting in the seats. Right, we supposed to be sitting in the seats already, if I scroll down to Article Two. If I scroll down to Article Two, it already recognized, this is very important, what I'm going over, it recognized the empire. And the empire been ran by who? The Sultan as an office. And the Moxin was the state and the governments of both the Sultan and the Moors are running the empire. It's too easy. Why no Moors teachers tell you this? Because then they would have to turn around and tell you that the word Moor means what? Moroccan, and they wanna keep telling that you the true American, they don't know how to course correct. Let's continue. Alright. So when we start talking about the responsibility of states. For internationally wrongful acts, if, if, if anyone injures our states, right? Keep in mind that right now, we only have seven states in the Empire of Morocco. So United States of America, any state on planet Earth injures one of our seven recognized states. Right? Now we get to utilize what's called the responsibility. The responsibility of states. For internationally wrongful acts, but the only way to enforce this, you must become a party to it and you yourself must be a state. So it's state on state dispute. And the problem is, we didn't have a state, Moors were stateless, which made us lawless. Right? Because we have to understand what, what is a state, a state is recognized by what? In the Treaty of Montevideo nineteen thirty-three, right, a state is a person in international law, listen. Montevideo Convention of Rights and Duties of States, nineteen thirty-three. Now you come down. Okay? Brother Drake, if you gonna read Article One, please.
Article One. The state as a person of international law should possess the following qualifications. A, a permanent population. B, a defined territory. C, government. And D, capacity to enter into relations with the other states.
So therefore, it tells you right off the top, the parties must be known, the state as a person in international law, so you need a state. In order to even talk about international law, that's how you invoke your rights through statehood. So the state as a person of international law should possess the following qualifications, A, a permanent population. B, a defined territory, but what is a territory, a territory is what? A state. And all states have what? Governments. And all states have now have the right, what, the capacity to enter to relations with other states, so it's state on state relations. What was the problem with the Moors? We were stateless. Why, because we had no governments. So when the Moors fail, what failed? Our governments, how do we rise back up? Governments, so how the heck are we ever gonna uplift, follow humanity and we're stateless? That's the problem. So in other words, the Moors, Moors love to talk about this word capacities and incapacities. Well, guess what? All the Moors were in incapacity, we were stateless and lawless. And if you had no laws, it's because you had no government, governments established what? Laws. So we're in incapacity instead of capacity, we had incapacities because we were stateless, cuz we had no three months of government. This is too easy. But we keep blaming everything on the white man. We need to turn around and look at ourselves in the mirror. Blame ourselves for being in derelict of duty to understand these simple terminology of what? Treaties. Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. Listen. Alright. So now that you got a state. And you can get the state on state relations, and someone's state violates your state right, they entered your state, right? As a person in international law. Right? Now you get to invoke the responsibility of states. For internationally wrongful acts. Okay. We're gonna start the reading today, obviously we'll finish this up. Over the next few classes. Okay, no.
Responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts. Part one, the internationally wrongful act of a state, chapter one, general principles, article one. Responsibilities of a state for its internationally wrongful acts. Every internationally wrongful act of a state entails the international responsibility of that state.
Okay.
Article two, elements of an internationally wrongful act of a state. There is an internationally wrongful act of a state when conduct consisting of an action or omission. A is attributable to the state under international law and. B constitutes a breach of an international obligation of the state.
Alright, so this is very important, Article Two, Moors. It says the elements of an internationally wrongful act of a state, what are the elements, okay? There is an internationally wrongful act of a state when conduct consisting of an action or omission. Is A attributable to the state under international law, so all states, all states. All states come under international law, all states on planet Earth. So that's why all Moors need to be studying what? International law instead of domestic municipal laws. This is where the Moors made their mistakes because their leaders kept telling them to study municipal laws. Instead of studying international law. Because states are held responsible for everything underneath their umbrella. You always hold the state responsible, who's the state? The person in international law, this is why when people get caught up in a, let's say, a, um, a civil or, let's say, a criminal case. It says this, uh, United States of America versus, uh, Joe Brown. Or it says, uh, the state of Alabama versus Joe Brown, since the state versus someone else. Cuz the state is a person in international law, you see? So when we as Moors are trying to bring suits against the United States of America, there's several charter states, we never said our state versus their state. We kept saying, uh, Kendrick Bay versus, uh, S- State of Alabama. Now, now, it's supposed to be state on state dispute. This is why we were dropping the ball, you see? We didn't understand how to put things in light manner. This is state on state dispute or state on state relations, right, such as Article One of the Treaty of Montevideo. Article One says about state relations, right, the capacity to enter into relations with other states. Right? Alright. So you always hold the states responsible, okay, so no matter what. No matter what the United States of America does, like maybe they're a United States federal corporation, which is commonly known as a international, intergovernmental organization. You always hold the state responsible, right, so it's the United States of America, which is the state on the treaty. Then you have second, the United States as the intergovernmental organization, and who's third, and that would be state of Alabama, in which there is no state Alabama, it's just an organ, it's a charter. They call themselves state Alabama, so you call them by the name they like to be called, that don't necessarily make them a state. Right, I, I could, I could say I'm Michael Jordan, but that don't mean I'm Michael Jordan, I can claim to be Michael Jordan, but that don't make me Michael Jordan. So state Alabama can call themselves a state, that don't necessarily make them a state. But if you turn around on the acquiescence and recognize them as some type of organic state, then that's just shame on you. For your own cognitive dissonance. You see? So therefore, you, you hold the United States of America responsible as the state and everything under the United States of America umbrella is their responsibility, you hold the state responsible. So you dealing with them, you deal with the United States of America first and everything underneath them, all their organs, departments. Right, all their municipalities, their charter states, their counties, right, their districts. Right, all their officers, agents, all the organs, you, all of them come under umbrella of the United States of America. So you always hold the United States of America responsible for everything that all their different departments do, whether it's the federal government departments. Or it's the, uh, all the several union states, if they do something like state of Alabama, if state of Alabama does something wrong, guess who you bring the suit towards? United States of America. So you, you blame the United States of America for what the state of Alabama did. And you bundle them. You see? Cuz the United States of America responsible for everything under that umbrella, because that's the name on the treaty. Alabama ain't sign no treaties, United States of America signed a treaty. So you hold the United States of America responsible for everything Alabama does, follow me? Alright. Okay, number three, Article Three.
Article three, characterization of an act of a state as internationally wrongful. The characteristics of an act of a state as internationally wrongful is governed by international law. Such characteristics is not affected by the characteristic characterization of the same act as lawful by internal law.
Read that again.
The characterization of an act of a state as internationally wrongful is governed by international law. Such characterization is not affected by the characterization of the same act as lawful by international law.
By internal law.
By internal law.
Okay, so this is very important, Moors, listen. Ar- Article Three. The characterization of an act of a state. As internationally wrongful is governed by international law, you see that? So everything that states do. All states are governed ultimately, ultimately by international. International law, right, it's governed by international law, right? So the bottom line is states. States are governed, governed by international law, you see that? So therefore, if Negroes, blacks and colors. Were having problems with the United States. Why would we marching and praying, why don't we just go to the United States boss? You know, United States boss was a time? International law. But the only reason why the Negro blacks and colors couldn't do it, because we were state. But the only reason why the Negro, Blacks and Colors couldn't do it, because we were stateless. We could not bring our state rights against the United States of America. This whole thing was about state rights. We were trying to get equal rights, we should have been trying to get state rights for ourselves. But instead, we was up on Capitol Hill talking about, can y'all pass some civil rights laws for us? They was like, no, go read your dang on treaties. Y'all got so much power as Moors and y'all up here on Capitol Hill asking us to write some legislation for y'all? When y'all got treaties and treaty supreme law of the land? How about you go back and ask those spiritual Negro, Black and Color leaders why they not telling you that you're Moors? Instead of here on the hill begging for some civil rights. We didn't need civil rights, we needed state rights, we needed state rights, Moors. State rights. We've been hoodwinked, bamboozled and led astray by our leaders. We should have been governed by international law, in order to be affiliated with international law, you had to be what? A state. It's about states. Not civil rights. Of state rights. Read it one more time, Article Three.
Article three, characterization of an act of a state is internationally wrongful as internationally wrongful. The characterization of an act of a state as internationally wrongful is governed by international law. Such characterization is not affected by the characterization of the same act as lawful by internal law. Chapter two, attribution of conduct to a state. Article four, conduct of organs of a state. One, the conduct of any state organ shall be considered an act of the state under international law.
Pause, read again.
One, the conduct of any state organ shall be considered an act of that state under international law.
Pause. So what is an organ? What's what's an organ, okay, the the title is what? Conduct of organs of a state, so the state has organs that works for it, who the organs? That's all the state departments, FBI, right, federal bill of prisons, all their departments, right, are organs. What else are organs? The agents themselves, agents are organs, so the people, agents, governmental agents are called organs themselves. So the word organ is a generic word, that's a catch-all. The word organ is a department, the word organ is the agents. The word organ is a county, a district or a charter state, State of Alabama is an organ. Uh, Atlanta as a city, that's really a county, is an organ, Atlanta is an organ. Atlanta Police Department is an organ. The police are organs. So anyone who works on behalf of a governmental agency is an organ. Whether it's the building, the charter, right? And even including the agents themselves, they're all organs. It's a catch-all. So right here it says, Article Four, conduct of organs of a state. So the conduct of all the United States of America, right, so the United States of America's umbrella is responsible for all the organs such as the United States, the United States is a federal corporation, that's an organ. United States is an international intergovernmental organization, it's an organ, it's an organization. Then the United States has put together what? Charters called the fifty union states. Those are all charters, but their charters are what? Organs. And all of those organs, i.e. charters, i.e. union state, have set for counties and those counties are also charters. And sometimes they refer to them as districts, right, townships, et cetera, they're all organs and all the police, all the government officials, whether it's it's federal, state or local municipality, they're all organs and the United States of America is responsible for all organs, no matter who they are. That must be understood, so therefore, international law turns around and says, okay, what, who governs states and organs, it tells you right here, first sentence, note.
One, the conduct of any state organ shall be considered an act of that state under international law.
Pause, so the act of a state falls under what? It's not municipal law, it falls under what? International law, this is too easy. But we would have known this, this came out in two thousand one. Two thousand one, it's been over twenty years since this came out. Why aren't your Moors American teachers reading this out loud? Why they got you studying all these local municipalities, state laws? All this rare due to cut off Supreme Court, you studying cases in Virginia, Massachusetts, all that's BS. You should be studying international law. All states are governed by international law, so why haven't we been studying international law as a people? That's my question to the NAACP. Since you claim you looking out for the people, that's my question to the HBCUs and the, all the churches and all the mosques. To all the temples, to the civic Moors, why haven't we been studying international law since international law governs states? This is sad, it's shameful. Let's read it again. It's gonna be redundant. This is powerful information y'all need to understand, that your Moors American teachers are not gonna teach you, your grand sheiks are not gonna read this out loud to you, that must be understood. Article Four, let's read again.
Article four, conduct of organs of a state. One, the conduct of any state organ shall be considered an act of that state under international law. Whether the organ exercises legislative, executive, judicial or any other functions, whatever position it holds in the organization of the state and whatever its character as an organ of the central government or of a territorial unit of the state.
Pause, read again.
One, the conduct of any state organ shall be considered an act of that state under international law. Whether the organ exercises legislative, executive, judicial or any other functions, whatever position it holds in the organization of the state and whatever its character as an organ of the central government or of a territorial unit of the state.
Two.
Two, an organ includes any person or entity which has that status in accordance with the internal law of the state.
Take it from the beginning, chapter, section one and two.
Okay, Article Four, conduct of organs of a state. One, the conduct of any state organ shall be considered an act of that state under international law. Whether the organ exercises legislative, executive, judicial or any other functions, whatever position it holds in the organization of the state and whatever it, its character as an organ of the central government or of a territorial unit of the state. Two, an organ includes any person or entity which has that status in accordance with the internal law of the state.
Right, so in order for us as a people to get our rights, our rights, our human rights have to come through our own state rights. Then our state rights, if our state rights have been injured, then we can bring a suit against the offender state, against the belligerent state. But we could never, ever bring suit to get our rights, it's since we were stateless, we couldn't bring our, we didn't have our own rights. We wasn't protected by our own state rights. We were not clothed in our own state rights. Because if we had our own state, we could have protected ourselves and enforced international law against any colonist or conqueror in the Empire of Morocco during the varying stages of decolonization. During the varying stages of our Declaration of Independence. This is what we've been derelict in understanding, we didn't understand these three terms I'm about to say. We didn't understand the observation, application and recognition of our own rights. We did not observe our own rights. We did not apply our own rights. We didn't recognize our own rights. And all those terms can be found in your treaties. It was our obligation to go back and just simply sit in the seats of government, it's already been set forth, it's already been recognized, it's already been accepted as a customary norm of international law for Moors to govern their own dang on lands. But what we were in the absence of is we didn't understand statehood. The world has moved forward, you have to have a state and a state is bound by a constitution. All the Moors have been derelict in the absence of a constitution that recognizes three branches of government, I cannot say this enough. And the treaties already gave you the absolute right to sit in the seats of government. But the problem is, your Moors teachers keep trying to tell you that you're American and that the Americans are sitting in your government chairs, that's a lie. The Americans got every right to be in Morocco, to hold property in Morocco, to have their governments in Morocco, to govern Americans. We were supposed to be governing Moors, more on more government and then govern over the great enterprise which is commonly known as the United States of America. But we supposed to be working in cooperation with them to get into commerce. It's amity and commerce, what does amity mean? Friendship. Then you get into the money, you gotta shake hands first and then get into commerce. So we were derelict in our own duties, understanding we had to have the proper written instruments. And you can't find the proper written instruments at RDB Publications. RDB Publications is not a state, you can't find the proper written instruments at a temple, a temple is not a state and you sure as heck can't find it at Kinko's. So we gotta stop the cap and stop, stop the crap and get back to understanding that we need a nationalism movement to get back into constitutions. Declare our independence. Establish the states. Can't say this enough. These are states, these are seven states who come together to work together, the round table, to organize ourselves. Just like the Amazigh people are doing in North Africa. They're tired of being colonized by the Arabs. Slowly and surely, when they get their act together, the indigenous Amazigh people, Amazigh people, they gonna be making their claims, it's just a matter of time, that's why they coming together as a collective over there. And the King of Morocco, Tunis, Algeria, Algeria, right, Egypt, right? All those territories, the indigenous people are starting to talk and come into a collective understanding of what they need to do to declare their independence, it's just a matter of time. They're tired of being in a status called internal self-determination. No, now they want external self-determination, just give it some time. Or else they wouldn't be talking to each other if they didn't have a master plan. So we as the Moors in the West, we're in, we're now coming together. Who's coming together? Moroccans. That must be understood, right? So here's what we gonna do, we gonna, we gonna leave it on this article right here. We gonna pick this up because it's a link you read. Moors can go back, start reading this in advance as we start going through it. But like I said, chapter two, the attribution of conduct to a state, right, attributable. You, you, the, the other states are attributable for their injury they've done to your state. So we gonna leave it right here on Article Four. Only thing I can tell the Moors is this. We have to stop the cognitive dissonance. W- w- we as a people are the problem and the solution. And and we have to stop the paralysis of analysis. We have to stop all this posturing. We have to put the old paradigm to the back and turn the page. I agree with that. Islam.